I call this meeting to order. This is a commissioner meeting of December thirteenth, 2023, at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center in a commissioner meeting room on One Spring Street, New Jersey. Call please.
Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Space?
Here.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Here.
Please, the Roman is down, so salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four is our public statement pursuant to Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975. Adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on January 4th, 2023, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, New Jersey, to the following: The New Jersey Herald and the Star Ledger. It is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. Number five is the approval agenda. Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved. It's not amended.
Not amended.
Yeah, it's not amended. Just that just didn't come off, so it's just approval, approve the agenda. There we go.
Motion, was that from Commissioner Fantasia?
That was so moved.
Secondly?
Second.
Second Commissioner Space, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, carries. Number six, proclamation, certificates and presentations. We have a proclamation. This is recognizing 2023 Sussex County Municipal Alliance Volunteer of the Year. And we have somebody here, right? There you are, come on up, please.
Hi Nick.
Commissioner Space, you can read that.
Yes. Whereas every municipality in Sussex County has the opportunity to participate in the municipal alliance program, providing substance abuse prevention programs for residents of all ages. And whereas there are 11 active municipal alliances representing 22 out of the 24 municipalities in Sussex County, and whereas the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse has recognized individuals throughout the state of New Jersey for their commitment to the success of the municipal alliance program through their voluntary efforts. And whereas the Sussex County Department of Health and Human Services, the County Alliance Steering Subcommittee, and the Local Advisory Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse have recognized Marie Morrow of the Sparta Municipal Alliance as the 2023 Sussex County Municipal Alliance Volunteer of the Year. Ms. Morrow is constantly going above and beyond to support the growth of the alliance, as well as the audience within the community they serve. Her excellent work ethic and organizational skills are vital to the success of events like Lead and National Night Out, which she coordinated, coordinated, and all of the work of the Sparta Alliance. She perfectly exemplifies through her actions, the qualities and characteristics needed to be effective engaged member of the alliance. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners recognizes Marie Morrow as the 2023 Sussex County Municipal Alliance Volunteer of the Year. By order of the Board of County Commissioners, Chris Carney, Commissioner Director, Herbert Yardley, Deputy Commissioner Director, Dawn Fantasia, County Commissioner, Jill Space, County Commissioner, and William J. Hayden, County Commissioner.
Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
So good evening, my name is Nick Kaptenakis. I am the Director of the Sussex County Division of Community and Youth Services. Tonight, I'd like, I'd like the Board Commissioners to join me in congratulating Marie as the 2023 Sussex County Municipal Alliance Volunteer of the Year. Our county municipal alliance programs engage local residents and other community partners in an effort to prevent alcoholism and substance abuse. There are 22 individual alliances representing 22 municipalities in Sussex County. Each alliance is primarily comprised of volunteers that operate programs specific to their community needs. Marie has been a member of the Sparta Municipal Alliance for three years and has been praised by Police Chief Jeff McCarick and Councilwoman Christine Quinn for her organizational skills, work ethic, enthusiasm, and compassion. Her dedication to the residents of Sparta and to the health of her community make her a deserving recipient of this year's award. With that, I'd like Marie to say a few words.
Thank you. It's genuinely brought to receive a justice award in this sense. Me and myself, growing up, I actually was a kid who did bend a lot from these programs that we implement regularly, so it was just a very small piece in a large herbal. Thank you to you, and I hate speaking.
You did a good job and thank you for your service. Appreciate that.
Hi everybody. My name is Christine Quinn. I am serving on the Sparta County Council. More specifically, I'm serving as the co-chair of our municipal alliance. And I feel bad putting my back to anybody, so I could not be rude. There's not a lot more that I can add, other than what has been said about the outstanding of our story. We can all agree that the programs that the alliance is bringing forward are so critical and so important, and it's just an absolute joy. Marie has had such an impact. So I would present you, you know what this is? With, it's Sparta County, the challenge coin that we give to members of our community that step up and really give a lot of themselves and really making a difference above them, going above and beyond. So it is my honor on behalf of Chief McCarick and myself and our alliance and our entire community to give you this challenge coin to really acknowledge all the efforts and the impact that you have made.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. We have a presentation from the Highlands Council.
Well, it's not from the Highlands Council, it's about the Highlands.
Thank you guys for coming back, by the way.
Thanks for still doing it.
Yeah.
If, well, it's not, for everyone in the audience, if you do come up, it's not, it's a microphone that records, so if you could just kind of enunciate to allow the whole room to hear what you're saying.
I'm Richard Kelski. I'm Vice President of the New Jersey Forest Freedom Association. It's a 501(c)(3). Been in business since 1975, and it supports sustainable forestry in New Jersey. It has roots going back to the 1800s, so it's a very well-established organization. At this time, the Highlands Council has been proposing to amend its regional master plan and to incorporate certain BMPs, which are best management practices regarding forestry and weather. And that sounds very innocuous and probably boring, but the impact of these is immeasurable on the county and on the Highlands in overall. It will impact probably 600,000 of the 800,000 acres of the Highlands. That's a big impact. And virtually, I think we calculated that at about 90% of the forested areas. The BMPs exist at the state level through DEP today, that's its best management practices of forestry, and they dictate things like how far you have to be from things. And right now, these new BMPs are talking about distances from wetlands, from thermal pools, from steep slopes, from national priorities, heritage priority sites. And those also sound kind of boring, but some of these distances are close to 1,000 feet.
So I just wanted to stop just for the, the audience. Buffer zones are usually about 150 to every 100 feet.
It varies depending on what is buffering.
What category of the stream and whatever.
Yes, and so these are extremely large distance measures that are talked about as dreams, but when you, if you adopt them, you end up restricting activity that, that just touches virtually every property. For example, I'm not in the Highlands, but on my property, I have a thermal pool. None of my neighbors could cut a tree because of my thermal pool. And so if I were in the Highlands, so that's what the kind of impact is what we're talking about here. And there are also exemptions to the Highlands Act, and there are 17 of them, and they are very, very important in the application of the Highlands Act, but they were also very important in getting the Highlands Act passed, which as you know, was super controversial and remains controversial as far as people not getting value for their property anymore in the Highlands. So there is one exemption which exempts people who operate their properties under forest management plan, their DEP approved, or forest stewardship plans, also DEP approved. Those people typically apply for assessment under the Farmland Assessment Act. And their assessment is contingent upon their compliance with those plans. So if these rules come into effect, technically tomorrow morning, they won't be able to comply with their plans. In particular, woodland management plans require you to generate income. And forest stewardship plans, while they don't require income, they require activity. And you're, you're subject to inspection and challenge from tax assessors locally. And you're also subject to inspection and challenge by the DEP. And in fact, the DEP is actually getting better at doing inspections, even though they're a little under manned. And they, they actually challenged some farmland assessments because people aren't doing the work on the property. And so the last thing we want to do is force people to not be able to do the work and then end up with tax challenges. So we've pointed this out and started to fight this battle at, at the council level and with tremendous support from various organizations, New Jersey Audubon, Federal, NRCS, U.S.D.A., has objected and written to them about it. And we've even had support from a group of legislators, including in particular Senator Senhart, Senator Ojo, Senator Manworth, Senator Space, Senator Man Joe Weber, and others are preparing letters to go in as well. And we have heard rumors that they may be backing off on this. But rumors don't pay the bills, and I don't back off unless I hear from the council that they're done. So I'm here tonight just to make you aware of it, to make you aware it's still going on. I had given you a possible resolution for you to send into them, but at the same token, I, I don't care whether it's a resolution or a letter or anything, just to express concern, to say, we're watching. And we want to be sure that you're not denying people the rights that they have under the Highlands Act to exercise forestry in the Highlands. You know, by way of just, you hear and you read a lot of things about forestry, the argument that Sparta Mountain were quite prominent in the press a hundred years ago. But in reality, there's very little cutting of trees in this place in New Jersey. It's all maintenance cutting, forest standard improvement. And it's not, you know, people out there with axes and red and black shirts on chopping away like in a movie scene. It's, it's people who operate under a plan and they operate as professionals. And I just wanted to try to protect those, care for their property rights, their property interests, the value of their land, their right to function. And so I bring it to your attention, I ask that you consider writing a letter or, or adopting a resolution. And I'd be happy to talk to the county about that. I'd like to get you copies of the letters that the legislators sent.
No, that would be great. Even a resolution, I'm not sure everybody has, has read the resolution. I personally don't have any problem. I, I will say, this was a good meeting for you to be at because there is Councilor Lex, Mayor Lex, mayor's here, councilmen throughout the county that are here tonight. So hopefully everybody's listening and kind of get a concept of what's happening here. As a server by trade, not that I do so much residential, but I, I know the buffer zones are really impacting, even commercial properties, residential properties, so on and so forth. So you have my support as, as me and Chris Carney. As for the others, I can't speak for them, but if everybody's on board, a, a letter or a resolution, either or, whatever you guys prefer, I would like to send that right away. Deputy Director? Are you okay with that?
Yes.
You guys all right? You have our support. Your work has spoken. Thank you for coming in again. I, I appreciate the work that you're doing because it is important, not just to, you know, Sussex County, but the state of New Jersey.
Much appreciated. Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you much. All right. Number eight. Seven, I'm sorry. Public hearing was none. Number eight's public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda for the topic. Motion to open a floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second. Commissioner Space, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, carries. The floor is open on agenda topics only. All you people, nothing on agenda. That's all right. Motion to close.
So moved.
Motion to close the floor for a public comment. Commissioner Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, carries. Number nine, commissioners' comments. We will start with Commissioner Hayden.
All right. Recently came to my attention that some volunteers were looking to run the county food pantry. It is our job as county commissioner to know what's going on and how things are being run. There were a lot of questions I had and I didn't have answers, so I dug on my own. And I found that people were telling me we had an angel donor, and who it was or we could, we didn't need to know. Didn't find that acceptable, so I dug. By using our EIN, I was able to find out that we have a donor that donates 2,383,000 or so they've said over the past several years. We know this, this should have been received because of the federal tax returns from this private foundation. I've looked at the returns going back to 2012, before the tax returns are unavailable, but of what I can see, they've received, or we've been told we received 2,383,000, possibly higher. When I asked to see a record of that, county held between the record of that, I was told none existed. Why? Because it's on a debit card from the foundation. I was told there was some arrangement by which upwards of 400,000 per year was placed on debit cards, and multiple volunteers, not county employees, even though the Sussex County EIN is being used, were running the pantry purchasing with that card. I asked for an accounting, I got receipts for a couple of years, but those receipts do not come close to what was supposedly donated. That creates a problem. So, and one of the other problems on the receipts was it said some of the deliveries were going out of state. I was told by council that that may have been an error, like Amazon, you have multiple addresses. However, these were delivery directions going out of state, not an address. And the address it goes to is quite interesting. That said, to make sure that everything looks above board, because we have a lot of volunteers trying to do a lot of good, feeding a lot of kids, that's something we should all be proud of in this county, I suggest the board make a full priority to find out a full accounting and indeed turn this back into a 501(c)(3) organization as it should have been run, and it can use the county facilities. I think that the way we're doing it is improper, it's sloppy bookkeeping, and it'll just lead to a lot of questions that we don't need.
So I just have a question for you real quick.
Yeah.
I understand a 501(c)(3), I, I think, as I told you prior, I think that is a good idea. Just to kind of, we're not overseeing it. With that being said, there was something you said in there prior to that was you wanted to do an investigation, that was just a?
No, it was an inquiry.
Inquiry.
All I did was find out, want to find, I'm not an investigator.
Understood.
But I saw things that just didn't make sense.
Actually, you said full accounting. Full accounting, that's what he said.
Yeah, full account.
I guess the question again is full accounting on what we're taking in, just a?
Well, we should know what we're taking in and out. We're a government entity. We're taking things in and pending, and that look, we're giving out up to, I think, 3,000 meals?
I think Joe has all the paperwork in front of him for how much.
So, I mean, we kind of should look like we know what's coming in and out, and we don't. I got receipts for three years that don't add up to near. And when I dug into the receipts, some of them were invoices, they weren't even receipts. So that makes it even worse.
Well, without getting into a debate up at the dais, I know?
I don't want to get into a debate, I just want to turn into a 501(c)(3), let them run it. Counselor and I spoke, he's willing to do it for free, I told him to pay him, and we just, they can use our garage, they can continue as they are, but they're their own entity. We don't do anything.
I guess to, to make this story short, if everybody's on board to do that, we are, this is a done deal.
Done deal.
No, we're not going to bring this up again, there's, there's nothing that?
No, it's out of my, I mean.
I just, I just?
I had a forensic accountant look at it, and he's like, wow, that's kind of a mess.
Understood. I, I, you and I spoke about it before, we came up with that idea, I thought it was a great idea. I told you I would, I'd back you on that one because my work is my duty. I just, I know what these people do. It's not our jobs to find out who, who, I guess, is doing their own personal business in a way that they feel fit or not fit.
I don't know what personal business, supposedly right now, we're under the county.
We're not accountants for anybody else, we have to worry about the county.
I know, and I asked our, our lady.
So I guess, I guess, as a legal, at a legal standpoint, Doug, I know you, you've done some research yourself, and I've, I've done a little. I went down and looked at receipts, I, I can't, went with Christina, I did all the math, it was to the penny. I didn't see anything that was wrong there. Again, I'm not an investigator, I'm not inquiring about anything. At a legal standpoint, I spoke to Doug a little bit today, from counsel's perspective, are we doing anything, I, I don't want the county to be liable, and I don't want any of us to be liable.
I don't think we're doing anything wrong.
I just want to hear from Doug.
I just think it doesn't look right. And when math doesn't add up, I think we should just, other entities, other governmental entities do it this way, they have a separate 501(c)(3), so they can't be involved, and they give the space. And I think that's the best way to do this, clears everybody out of it, and they can do their food bank, and still help all the, the people that need it, which obviously we have a lot in this county. And then it just doesn't wash the rest.
Thousand percent agreed. I would like to hear from, from Doug, if you wouldn't mind, just if any legal liabilities that we have as a county as a whole, what you see, just for, and for the record, honestly.
Of course.
I, I saw Bruce Scruton's here. Thanks for coming, Bruce.
Thank God he's here.
Thank God Bruce is here.
That's a joke, everyone, that was made, and that's why we're laughing.
But, no, I do want to hear all kidding aside, I want to hear from, you know, your perspective, from where we're at, what liability is taken and, and whatnot, so.
Of course. Look, the, the question, my, I view my role as your councilist is to manage risk, right? And to give you advice accordingly. The question that was asked of me was whether or not, in anything that I've warranted, whether or not the county has incurred some sort of legal liability. And I have not viewed or reviewed anything to make me think that that is the case, not at all. There is, as you've identified, a pantry, it's manned by volunteers, it's housed in the, the county administration building. I know Commissioner Space has some statistics relevant to what goes in and out of it, if there are tax irregularities, whatever they may be, and I've not seen those, but if they are, quite frankly, that's between the foundation, the donor to the foundation, and the Internal Revenue Service. And I, hypothetical to all of you, like if you donate X number of dollars to, to picket a veterans' foundation, and you give them $1,000 and you report to the IRS that you gave them to, that's on you. And eventually, someone will find out that you've done that, and if they catch up with you, they'll have to answer for it. If they're, i- if the foundation, the county's getting X number of, of items worth of food that are of one value, and the foundation is reporting something different, as I said, I've not seen anything to suggest that that's the case. But if that exists, as I say again, it's between the foundation and the, the IRS. The county is the beneficiary of these, these food donations on apparently a weekly basis. Your question to me, though, was whether or not I have come across anything that would suggest the county's incurred some liability by hosting the food pantry. And the answer to that is I have not seen anything to that effect, Commissioner, not at all. That's it.
So again, you know?
That said, that doesn't mean that there isn't a, you know, Commissioner Hayden's suggestion is, is noted, and I know you're, I think you're of similar opinion.
Absolutely.
It would create a totally different set of, of reconciliations, because obviously a 501(c)(3) would have its own reporting and do its own thing, and you could play, the county is able to play host for that at no cost as a charitable entity and you being a governmental entity, for whatever that's worth.
So going ahead, I know a lot of, you know, a lot of time's been spent on this, well, you know, a lot by you yourself, I know Christina's got some time in Elk and so on and so forth, food pantry, prior people who worked here, counsel himself, even me, myself, spending a little time, and any other commissioner about any time as well. Again, the proposal that you have, the, the 501(c)(3) is a good idea, I think it's a good idea, I agree with you. That's something that we need to look at, that's probably something that we're going to have to talk to the food pantry, see if there's somebody that wants to do that, is willing to do that. Like if Doug wants the volunteers' time to set it up, that's great, I'm most appreciative. But we still need some people. I've set three up before, I believe there's got to be three on the board.
Yeah.
If that can work. Again, good idea.
I've done one before as well.
I don't want our volunteers, and a lot of them are here, to get discouraged that we're against the food pantry.
Not against the food pantry, we just want it to look?
Right, and, and they, you know, there's, there's people, again, in the audience that have been working here for a long time, longer than I've been here, and I've been down to the food pantry a couple times, and it's, it's a little discouraging when I think that we're against that. I just want everybody to know, we are not against the food pantry. We are here, we're here to support that, we don't want to see anybody go starving. So I think we can let that die, is everybody on board with the 501(c)(3). We can make those calls and, and see where we can, if we can get that.
Well, I, I think you, don't you have to discuss that with the volunteers?
That's what I said, yeah.
Yep. And what do we do if they don't want to do that? Then we're going to have to have another discussion about it. So this is not the end of it, then? This may not be the end of it.
It may not be, but I see a lot of faces here that work for the food pantry, and I think when we open up the public session, I have a feeling that we're going to hear from them.
Okay.
So, any other comments you have? Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Space?
Thank you. I have quite a few comments. First, I want to thank all the food pantry volunteers. The amount of time that you guys put in doesn't go unnoticed and unappreciated. I've been in there myself, and I've seen what you do, and I'm guessing that these are the weekend take homes with the kids, but that's a guess. So I did have to open these bags one time, and they're not that easy.
Do we have to give these back, by the way?
So anyway, I have, I have multiple different comments. I would like to bring to light the importance of our Sussex County Food Pantry. It's staffed by many dedicated, hardworking volunteers. The food pantry serves numerous Sussex County residents each week. The pantry is stocked through various food drives throughout the county. For example, I'm sure you've seen the county working with the local radio station for Stuff the Bus. This is just one of, one of many events throughout the year. We also have a donor, we call the angel donor, that donates large sums of food all year. We have to remember, it's not just the holiday season when these families need food, it's all year round. If we didn't have this angel donor, we would be adding a line item into the budget because we would never be able to feed the amount of residents that this food pantry feeds. We have many residents receiving NJ SNAP benefits in Sussex County, that's the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. During the pandemic, the amount was, the amount received was increased. In March of 2023, the additional was removed and people saw big decreases, yet food costs have significantly increased, leaving many to have to turn to the food pantry for additional food. We have 2,447 open SNAP cases and a total of 3,837 total recipients, including adults and children. Our food pantry not only provides food directly to our residents, but we assist the following county pantries and organizations: Catholic Charities in Franklin, Branchville Presbyterian, Branchville Methodist, Project Self-Sufficiency, Bodhi Ministry, Our Lady Queen of Peace in Branchville, Sussex Help, Andover Presbyterian, Benny's Bodega, who happened to be there at the time that I was in the food pantry collecting their food, Harvest House, Waterloo Church, St. Francis de Sales, Vernon Methodist, 21st Century Learning Program, Newton Schools, Our Lady Queen of Peace, Swartzwood, Liberty Towers Ministry. We assist four schools, Newton, Vernon, Franklin, Hopacong with the Weekend Bags, Bread of Life Ministry, Christ Church Outreach, Sparta Food Pantry, Stan Hope Methodist, Project Health, Birth Haven, Manahouse, St. Thomas Sandiston, Vernon Schools, Franklin Schools, Sussex Tech Snacks, and On-Site Food Pantry. Year-to-date, the pantry has distributed food to 4,782 households, which equates to a little over 20,000 people. This does not include backpack snacks, which approximately 22,000 have been distributed since 1/1/23. Approximately 435,000 donated per year by one donor. Without that, the pantry would be extremely small, and there would be no backpack snacks for the schoolchildren. Approximately 40,022 has been donated thus far in 2023. This is designated for use of the food pantry and social services. The donors sometimes request that their donation is used for certain items, such as baby products, dog food, food gift cards, et cetera. Social Services uses these donations for clients who are not otherwise eligible for state or federal programs, but need assistance such as utility bills, homelessness, et cetera. There are two major food collection events, Stuff the Bus in November and Backpack Snacks for Kids in March. Those food drives bring in staple items that are generally used for the holidays. The drives fall, the drives fall around. Social Services employees are scheduled to collect food at those food drives, which we need to thank them also because they are volunteering their time to do that. The food put onto a county bus is then put onto a county bus and pantry? The food put onto a county bus is then put onto a county bus, and pantry volunteers and some staff volunteers empty the bus the next day. Over 35 bags weekly are packed and delivered to elderly folks living in Liberty Towers. Line by line of receipt, the food pantry assists the following pantries and schools in Sussex. Many of them are very, very small and do not request food often, but some are assisted two times a month. This allows residents to need to go to their local food pantry if they do not have transportation, et cetera. And then I already read the organizations, so I'm not gonna reread all of those. And I, I just want to say that I was very disheartened to see that there was something coming up at our meeting on social media. If there is ever anything, any questions, I feel it's best to take them to the board individually, because we can't all meet without a quorum. But individually, I would rather hear things firsthand than to hear it through the rumor mill and have to dig around on social media to hear. And, and I won't stand by and be the bridge who closed the food pantry. So I'm willing to volunteer and do whatever I have to do to make sure that this food pantry operates the way that it needs to for our residents. And then my other comments, I have. Division of Community and Youth Services, there is a resolution on the agenda this evening for Sussex County to receive social services for the homeless funding in the amount of 198,760. This funding is critical for the county in order to provide emergency overnight shelter and homelessness prevention services for residents at risk or experiencing homelessness. Division of Senior Services, an AARP Smart Driver Course will be held at the Sussex County Main Library located at 125 Morris Turnpike in Newton on Monday, December 18th and Tuesday, December 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30. Upon, upon completion, this two-day course offers precipit, precipitous discount on their insurance premiums for three years. Motorists age 50 and over are welcome to attend the class. There is a fee of $25 for non-AARP members and $20 for AARP members, and free for participants with AARP or United Healthcare as their Medicare supplement. To register or obtain additional information, please contact the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1277. Senior Assistance with Applications, the Division of Senior Services assists seniors with applications for various programs, including the Home Energy Assistance Program. Seniors who need help paying for their heating costs this winter season can call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1221, for eligibility information, general questions, and assistance with their application. And I also would like to congratulate our new Sussex County Acting Prosecutor Carolyn Murray. Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner Director Carney and I attended her swearing-in, and we wish her well, and we welcome her here. Commissioner Carney and I also attended the Sussex County Economic Development Partnership Mayor of the Year Dinner. And it was nice to have a chance to hear all of what is going on in the various towns directly from their mayors. And I also want to congratulate Mayor Howard Borella Vernon for being selected as Mayor of the Year. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Space. Just before you go, Commissioner Fantasia, if you guys want to come sit down, there's some seats up front instead of standing. There's, there's two, three over here. It's entirely up to you, I just don't want you to stand there if we have seats around here. Okay, Commissioner Fantasia.
My comments on the food pantry will be brief before I give my regular report. What I can say is that of everybody sitting up here, I probably hold the distinction, or maybe distinction is the wrong word, of being the only person who was a client at the food pantry not so many years ago. When my children and I had a very rough, unexpected situation. I was a client for Sussex County Social Services, I was on food stamps, TANAP. And to now be in this position and see the good that these organization, this organization does, what the volunteers of the food pantry do, I would not be where I am today if it was not for the county of Sussex, so, thank you. Moving along, I'll start with the Health Department. We are offering walk-in flu and COVID-19 vaccinations at the Office of Public Health Nursing, 201 Wheatsworth Road in Hamburg on Wednesday, December 20th, from 12 to 2. COVID-19 vaccines are free of charge, the flu vaccine is $25 per dose, and the high-dose flu vaccine is $65 per dose payable by cash or check only. Flu vaccines are free, though, for individuals with Medicare Part B. There's no out-of-pocket cost for those insured with any Blue Cross Blue Shield plan, and participants must bring their insurance card. So again, appointments aren't required, feel free to pop in if you so choose to receive a flu or COVID vaccine. Public Health Nursing continues to provide homebound vaccinations for those who request it. Now, by way of communicable disease investigations, there were eight reportable diseases investigated other than COVID cases by Public Health Nursing in Sussex County. They include one foodborne disease, one foodborne or waterborne disease, one person-to-person disease, two person-to-person diseases that were respiratory in nature, and two tick-borne diseases, and one hepatitis C parinatal. Now, updates and outbreaks on clusters under investigation of December 13th. There are three COVID-19 outbreaks in our long-term care facilities. Now, please remember that outbreaks are considered when they're actually being spread from the facility, so not two people work at the same place and they happen to go there and brought it from elsewhere. This is actually being spread in three of our long-term care facilities. We want to keep very, very close watch on that, because we do not want any type of repeat with our elderly and those who are immunocompromised. We have one COVID-19 outbreak in a school, one GI outbreak in a school, an RSV outbreak in a long-term care facility, and one in a nursery school. And that's particularly troublesome, because we know RSV could be fatal in our population of young children. There is a strep cluster at a nursery school, influenza A and flu cluster in a high school. There is upper respiratory infection, multiple etiologies outbreak in a school for special needs and medically fragile children. This outbreak case is under investigation, and the school is currently closed on the 13th, 14th, and 15th of this month, and the school will reopen on the 18th. So that is a school for students who have medical needs and special needs. I will move on to just hospitalizations, since that's always the question. I know we've exhausted some of our COVID conversations here. However, there are 24 hospitalizations in September. There were 49 in October and 33 in November, so they seem to be, on average, holding steady. I want to just touch again on that spotted lanternfly grant, I know it's snowing the other day for the first time we had snow, but we still see those little buggers flapping around sometimes. So we do still have some spotted lanternfly traps. So if you are interested, please call the Office of Mosquito Control, 973-940-5225. And we are giving out the traps this Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00. That is at, in Frankfurt Township at the Sussex County Main Library. So each resident is entitled to two free spotted lanternfly traps. If you see them frolicking around your domicile, you can certainly retrieve them. As of right now, we have a total of 858 traps out in the communities, and last week mosquito staff delivered 52 traps to 13 towns, actually, that absorbed the overflow. So that is my update from the Health Department. What I would like to next just mention is that some of us here on the Commissioner Board, some representatives from District 24, attended the Annual Season of Hope Holiday Toy Drive, one of them that Project Self-Sufficiency does. And when I say the sheer volume of toys would be any child's dream that you see, what a wonderful organization, and they just contacted so many different spaces, so many different venues to donate. And this one happened to be at the Black Forest Inn in Stanhope, Diana Conken in Stanhope, you know, is one of the leads on that. And what was, what was just collected was amazing. It was the one, if you're familiar, the growing stage in Net Kong, they had moved it over to the Black Forest, you know, to catch the overflow, and it was just amazing, the sheer volume. And I know there's gonna be a lot of happy kids on, on Christmas morning, which was wonderful. So I want to give the LD24 update, I have two updates coming from the state. Tomorrow, the Assembly State and Local Government Committee will be hearing a bill that was requested by Andover Borough. The bill is S652 in the Senate and A117 is the companion bill in the Assembly. Under current law, every municipality is required to have a Board of Health. Currently, members of the governing bodies of municipalities that are townships and have a population of not more than 20,000 residents are permitted to serve as the municipal Board of Health. Now, keep in mind, they must be designated a township. Andover Borough, which is a borough form of government, was trying to eliminate their local Board of Health and allow the Borough Council to serve as the Board of Health. But since they're not considered a township, they cannot do so. Senator Oraho, Assemblyman in Space, introduced legislation giving all municipalities the option of having their municipal governing body serve as a municipal Board of Health, as well as increasing the population limit instead of 20,000 or less to be 30,000 or less. So in the Senate, it's already passed unanimously bipartisan, the entire Senate said yes. And after tomorrow, it's one step closer to being enacted into law when it goes before the Assembly. But that's just an update of Andover Borough's request, which now has hopefully impacted, you know, many, many borough forms of government across the state. Second is not necessarily as happy of news. Unfortunately, both the Democrat legislative majorities are pushing legislation tomorrow to eliminate the right of voters to vote on school budgets in April's school board elections. The bills being heard tomorrow are A5879 in the Assembly State and Local Government Committee and S4209 in the Senate Education Committee. Freedon and Montague moved back to April's school board elections, so they would be able to vote on school budgets. Senator Oraho and Assemblymen Space and Wirths introduced legislation to bring back voting on school budgets during the November general elections. These budget votes give voters a say in the fiscal direction of their districts, and we believe it's just plain wrong to prevent it. So again, those are two updates spurning directly from our municipalities, and we will keep you posted on the results of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fantasia. Deputy Director?
Thank you, I have a couple things from the Health Department. Women's health screening will be held on December 14th, which is tomorrow, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Office of Public Health Nursing. At Wheatsworth Road, you need to, the service is free to underinsured county residents who qual, or uninsured who qualify for New Jersey Cancer Education and Detection, NJCEED, the CEED program. To make an appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing, that number is 973-579-0570, extension 1246. Also, there's a program, A Matter of Balance, and whether, as you get older, very good for some older folks, as well as those in the middle of the road. It's a balance program, it's called A Matter of Balance, and it's available at Liberty Powers, Liberty in Newton, beginning January 4th, ending February 29th, from 9:30 to 11:00 a.m. And it's an eight-session program designed to reduce the fear of falling, increase activities levels among older adults. It's for participants to learn and set realistic goals to increase your activities, change your environment, and reduce all factors. Learn some simple exercises to increase strength and balance. To register more information, contact the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1221. This is a real important program, because many times you might be in a situation where you lose your balance. Sometimes it's your exercises and things you can do. My wife does go to the program, they have, they had one in Stillwater, I think it's a really good program. Also, I just want to comment on the Muskegon River Management Council. If you're not aware of that, they just issued a report on their activities for last year, and there is a section in there called Septic System Risk Assessment. And I would suggest that if you have the opportunity to go out and read that, because sometimes, depending on the data, you have to look at what the data is supporting changes in septic codes, areas, and sizes can be in there. I've been waiting for a copy, Christine has asked you to get me a copy when, when you have a chance. When you pull it up online, I could not, when they sent me something, I could not read it the way the print and the font, so, but that's something that maybe at the next meeting I can comment on. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director. I will be brief. Couple reports from the NJTPA pertaining to Sussex County. The NJTPA Board of Trustees approved the fiscal year 2024 to 2027 Transportation Improvement Program, always known as TIP, which contains all major transportation projects for the North Jersey region. At the September 12th meeting, 2023, Board of Trustees meeting, major projects for the Sussex County include replacement of Route 15 Bridge over the Palmstil River in Lafayette Township. Repayment of Route 94 from Pleasant Valley Drive to Maple Range Road in Vernon. Replacement of Route 206 Bridge over the Dry Brook in Branchville. The NJTPA Board of Trustees approved the fiscal year 2028 Study and Development Program, also on their September 12th meeting. Major product, the major product, major project for Sussex County was the replacement of the 206 Bridge over the Big Flat Brook in Staniston. USDAOT, Federal Railroad Administration, or the FRA, announced the fiscal year 2022 Corridor Identification and Development Program selections last week. This includes the Scranton to New York Penn Station corridor over the Lackawanna Cut-off in Sussex County, which received an award up to $500,000 to enter into step one of the program to develop a scope, schedule, and cost estimate for preparing, completing, and documenting its service development plan. Out of the county, which some people may pay attention, there's not, this is about the tunnel going over the Hudson, under the Hudson River. The NJTPA Project Priorization Committee will be voting after December 18th meeting, which is this coming Monday, I will be at. An amendment to the fiscal year 2024 TIP to add the new Hudson River Tunnel Project to the TIP, as requested by the Gateway Development Commission, in the amount of $3.4 billion. $3.4 billion. And Federal Transit Administration capital investment grant funding in order to start engineering right away in construction of new tunnels under the Hudson River Project into New York City. This is something that was put on hold by Governor Christie about eight years back, '56, if I remember, if I recall. A letter from the Clerk's Office just updating us, I will read it as it's written. As I am sure you're aware, the county clerk's fiscal year runs from December 1st, 2022, through November 30th, 2023. The 2023 budget submitted by the office indicated anticipated expenses of $1,360,000. The final revenue numbers posted for 2023 are $2,391,870.70. I am happy to report the county will receive over $1 million in excess revenue for the fiscal year, which in terms will go into our fund balance. The property alert system, as of November, we have 25 newly registered participants. Year-to-date, we are 653. Daniel's Law, this November, 29 newly registered individuals, and year-to-date is 512. So it's going up every month. I attended along with Commissioner Fantasia, and I'm surprised you didn't bring it up, was the Sussex County fundraiser at Front Farms.
I have to leave something for you.
Oh, thank you very much. It was a good event, Sussex County College does a great job, whatever they do, and they keep growing, 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 and I'm proud of that, I think we all are as commissioners. We had, oh, back to what you were saying before earlier, we had the mayor's reception, which Commissioner Space spoke about earlier, and there's a lot of council people and mayors here, which that might change next year, go for a back-on, well, even in Lafayette, well. I went over, and Chris Quinn, Councilwoman from, from Sparta reminded me, this year, early this year, when I became director, we had mayor's luncheons. And we have, we invited the mayors to the luncheons, and along with one of the commissioners here, I think the majority came, if not all. We went over some networking, some shared service and stuff, so now that you guys are here, I implore you guys to come. I think it's good, it's good for everybody. We go over shared services and when we're elected officials, to save the taxpayer money. And I think if we could do some shared service and go over ideas of what we're looking to do, or maybe ideas that didn't work. You know, I might have an idea, and you guys say, hey, I tried it already, I see Harvey Rozoff in that, in the audience environment there, he's been around a long time. He's been around a long time, you know. It's just nice to do so. Again, I just implore you guys to come. Another good event by Tammy Horstfield, which works so very hard. So I just wanted to update you on that. That's all I have for today. So moving on, there's number ten, is the approval of the consent agenda. We have none. Number eleven is approval minutes. This is from a regular meeting, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Motion to approve the minutes from a regular meeting. So move, Commissioner Yardley, second, Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Not on this, but before, after we're done with minutes. So go ahead. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries.
I just want to update the board that all of the missing minutes have been updated, and as well as an audio that was delayed. As you all know, usually the audios are uploaded within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. We had some staff that was on vacation due to the holiday and so forth, but that has all now been updated.
Thank you, and we apologize for that. We're upgrading our software with three sixty-five Microsoft, and it's, there's a lot to do. There's nothing we're hiding from you. Trust me, you can, you can hear it in the audio if you so choose. Number twelve, ordinance, there is none. Thirteen, we have two appointments and a resignation. A is resolution, the reappointment of Elka Yeder to the position of County Treasurer and County Finance Officer for the County of Sussex for a term of three years pursuant to NJSA forty A colon nine dash twenty-seven and NJSA forty A colon nine dash two eight point four. Resolution B is appointment of Robert Hayden to the Board of Education of the Sussex County Technical School for a term of four years, said term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Motion to approve resolutions A and B.
So moved.
Mr. Hayden's, any discussion?
Just for clarification on B, the appointment to the Sussex County Technical School, again, just for public edification, this is a bipartisan, bipartisan board, am I correct?
Correct.
So there are certain-
This particular member is a Democrat.
Okay, so this is a Democrat.
There's two Democrats, two Republican, one governor's on the nomination.
Thank you.
Or appointment, I should say.
Thank you.
I do have just a discussion. I just want to, going back to our CFO, Elka Yeder. Elka does a great job in what she does. I appreciate all the work she does. Every time I go into her office, she's always there for me explaining things, and I go there quite often. She'll get out her crayons and circle things for me. But it's, it's a pleasure. I would, I would shut that door if she ever tried to walk out that. She does always give us an answer. When we go in, she gives us an answer, and she breaks it down for us. She's really, really a great employee and a great asset to the county.
She's always looking for ways to save the taxpayer.
She has great ideas. She does. So with that being said, roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes. Fourteen's resolutions. All right, motion to adopt resolutions A through Q Q. So move, motion, Commissioner Hayden, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes. Fifteen's words of contract change orders bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the Order of Contract Change Orders Bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of said resolutions is and will further the public interest. Motion to adopt resolutions A through Q.
So moved.
Mr. Space, have a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Fantasia, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes. All right, sixteen's financial. We have the payments of bills list. We have two bills lists. We're going to go over them individually. Resolution A is the payments of bills list A from December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Motion to pay the bills list A.
So moved, second.
Commissioner Fantasia, Commissioner Space, seconds, any discussion? Roll call.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes. All right, resolution B is the payments of bills list B from December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Motion to pay the bills list B.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Abstain.
Dec- Deputy Director Carney, Yardley, sorry.
You're downgrading me, did you see that?
Yes.
Wow. That was your Christmas present. Resolution C is cancellation of outstanding checks. And resolution D is a transfer of twenty twenty-three current appropriations.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Question on outstanding checks. Would you just mind just explain that so, you know, if someone isn't sure what that is, or to the general public, Elka, outstanding checks?
Where is Elka?
Right there.
There you go. Just talking so highly. Would you like to explain that to our audience?
So there's checks that were issued prior to twenty twenty, well, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one that haven't been checked. Cash, they're still dated and reached out. We haven't come forward to collect them, so we can cancel them. And then we keep record of them, and if anybody ever comes back, we have record, and we would, at this point, we're canceling them to get them off.
Just to make sure that everybody understands, but when you see something like that, so it's prior to twenty twenty?
Well, it was twenty twenty-one and-
Twenty-one, okay.
Thank you, Elka. Motion to approve resolutions C and D.
I make it.
Commissioner Yardley, second. Commissioner Space, any discussions? Roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes. Our seventeenth is our personnel. We have none. Number eighteen is our administrative report. Fill in.
I could just say that by the tell of the number of resolutions that are on the agenda, the county itself is getting ready to close out our twenty twenty-three year and move into twenty twenty-four. A lot of what the county runs, runs through grants, whether it comes from the federal or state government. So their applications are allocations of funds that we all have to get in and closed out by the end of the year and started by the next year. So we're all very busy doing all of that right now.
Thank you. Number nineteen, County Council. Nothing, thank you. Twenty, any unfinished business? Any commissioners? Okay, number twenty-one is new business. I do have new business, and I, and I'm not looking for an answer by all means, but I talked to Rayanne, President of the C W A. She's helping out, as always, putting together a Christmas party for the county. I told her I would talk to you guys and see if we could all chip in some money to help out, that offset some costs. I know some people are bringing it in, but it'd be nice to kind of offset it and order out or whatnot. So you guys don't have to answer. Again, I don't want to put you on the spot. But, you know, if we can do that, that would be appreciated.
Yeah.
So that's all I got for that. Twenty-two, public session from the floor. This public session, for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics, please line up at the microphones, take name, municipality for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
So, second.
Commissioner Hayden, Commissioner Space, seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. The floor is open.
If I could just remind everyone to please, you can come up. I'm just announcing for the, for the group, because that's just a recording microphone.
Hello, everyone. I'm Carol Lopert, Golden Valley, New Jersey. And I was the former Food Services Director as well as the Social Services Director. And I thank you all for your support of the food pantry. I can tell you it's very needed and wanted to just talk to you a little bit more about it. How did it come about? As far as we know, that food pantry began as the emergency food pantry in the county back when social services started, which it was in the thirties at some point. And has always been there. No one knows really the date of it. And it really is for emergencies for people who don't have any food. Back when I started in two thousand and seven, I was there a couple of days, and a thirty long-term, thirty-eight-year long-term employee came and said, hey, we have no food. We have no food. It's the first time ever. We didn't know it was the beginning of the recession. And the food pantry was actually on the garage at the time. And so at that time, we knew we had to do something. We had to address this. We could not let our people not eat, especially during the recession. You were looking at people who had lost their jobs, who had lost their homes, who went through their retirement funds. It was really, really awful. And so we started by talking to radio station, who was wonderful. We started with W N N J. Now, they have three radio stations involved, and it just grows and grows. And every bit of food is used. At one point, it lasted from November through December. It doesn't last that long anymore. It just, it just goes out. And then it got to the point where we had so many people coming in because of the recession that we could no longer handle the food pantry. In fact, we had stuck the bus, and we came in the Monday after, and there was a turkey that was at the bottom of everything. So it was awful. And at that point, we asked Rita Oraho and Lisa Parrot, would they consider coming in? And they and Joe Hutter came in as volunteers to be able to stock the shelves and make bags for people to hand out. And as that went on, and we had to change, we just had to change to meet the needs. The numbers just kept growing and growing and growing.
One minute?
Yes. Oh, okay. And so what we had to do was different things, such as weekend bags, because we had teachers call and tell us that kids weren't eating over the weekend. They were drinking sugar water or were not eating. And so, I mean, the volunteers are just fabulous. They make them. We also have other ministries. Seniors now are a problem because with limited income, they just cannot afford food. And so we have a lot of seniors. We actually have a ministry who insurance. We help them with food, and they go into Liberty Towers and give food to people in Liberty Towers, especially those who are on, like, you know, slow diets and those kinds of things that can't go to a regular food pantry. But the biggest thing we did was really start to help all the food pantries. But I would like to have one moment to just speak to Commissioner Hayden's report, if I could.
I will, I will let you speak to Commissioner Hayden, but I do, I just want to ask you a question because it came up before, and Commissioner Hayden had, had a good idea, and I think it separates. And again, I don't think what you're doing is wrong. I will say that personally, speaking for myself. And I appreciate everybody here that, that volunteers, including yourself, and we've had this conversation before. But would you, do you think we can establish the five oh C three, five oh one C three? Is that something that maybe you could work on and get back? I know Jill's the liaison to the food pantry, something that you could work on with, you know, your volunteers and put this to bed, put it to rest, and then work with Jill as well? Is that something you think?
I think it's a great idea. You know, I do have to look into it with them because these volunteers take thousands of hours. I want them to be okay with it.
Right, understood.
So if you can give me a little time, it's right now for the holidays.
Right. We don't want to see anybody go hungry, especially during holidays. It's important that we keep this going.
Thank you.
And I, I think, as you know, we're, even as a commissioner board, I talked to my creatures from the fairgrounds, Tammy Horstfield from the chamber, and I'm looking to do some food drives with them, collaborate with them, and to get that done, to bring some more food. And even with a Republican County Committee, we're talking with our chair about that, and he's willing to help out with that as a whole in the county. So hopefully, I could, we could start providing some of our food for, right, because I know it's needed.
Yes, thank you so much. The need is incredible. So, Mr. Hayden, I really did appreciate your comments. I appreciate that you want to have accountability where, because that's so important, you know, in any county. So I wanted to explain to you, because I think there's a misunderstanding how the food pantry works itself. So all the food pantry accepts is product.
No, I understood that.
So, you know, you did speak about these receipts that, of course, they wouldn't have any receipts for anything that is received as a donation.
No, and I get that.
Right.
I just see that we're the recipient according to a foundation, and to clear things up, make things more transparent. Because when there's no transparency, conspiracies start to arise. I know you've run some five oh one C threes, I believe. Didn't you get a degree in accounting?
I do have a degree.
Okay, so, so wouldn't it, this would be pretty easy for you to run and make sure that we don't have those issues, wouldn't it?
Well, you know, besides one donor, we do have a lot of other donors, and-
I know that.
Yes, there are like so many donors. And so I'm really not understanding. Our, our job is to accept food, get it out to the public. That's all we do. And so I'm just sort of, I'm just lost.
I mean, most of the- Commissioner Hayden, just for a second, let's just let her finish, just to maintain- She just looked like she finished. Most of the other entities-
I, I really am. Like I said, I am lost. I don't know, you know, why we would have anything to do.
It was a five oh one C three at one point. For some reason, it was taken out of that status. Other municipalities, I know Matt Olive, the mayor there, didn't want any problems, so he set it up as a five oh one C three. And I know you were part of the, you were part of three of them. One of them was with your church. One of them was Samaritanian, I believe. Yes, yes, yes. So I don't know why it would be that hard. You've run the books. I've run, he's run. Our lawyers run five oh one C threes relatively easy.
Okay, that's good, because there are no books for the food pantry.
I know, but it's just easier if it's not a governmental entity, and you guys have it. We'll give you the space. We'll even still do the deliveries. I don't have a problem with that. I just don't want it showing up on ours that we're receiving things and people start questioning it.
Okay, I didn't think it was on the county E I N.
It is. All right.
Okay, all right.
Can I just interrupt?
No, 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 no.
No.
No, I think we're done. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else, please? Just come on up. Women first. And it is the great Sandy here, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Hall from Lake, New Jersey. I want you to know that you guys are very supportive of our efforts to defeat the proposal to change the Delaware National Recreation Area into a national park. The New Jersey Sierra Club once supported that proposal. They do not. Finally, after many requests and your support as well, a member of the New Jersey Sierra Club came to the Stanston County meeting, and thank you, Commissioner Yardley, for coming also.
I did report on that, but-
Right, yeah, and thank you all for your, you know, response. I know you guys are jammed up and busy. Anyway, we spoke with the representative of the Sierra Club, and yes, any future discussions or plans that's going to be going on concerning D W or ceramic communities, we will be a part of, and we will be notified about it. And we're very open to suggestions. And yes, we're going to be having meetings. And on another note, I did have a really, really good meeting today with reps from Representative Kane's office down in Bernardsville. And I will say we're moving in a very good and positive direction, getting a lot of energy up to look at all the aspects of not just the original proposal, but the revised proposal, which has got a lot of new concerns to it. So thank you for your support, and hopefully, we'll just get, we'll carry on in two thousand twenty-four and end this, so we can all have a life again. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Sandy, thank you for your hard work, and thank you for keeping us up to date. Appreciate that. Mr. Larson?
Thank you. Gary Larson, Frankfurt. First of all, I also want to thank the committee for your words towards the food pantry and your appreciation of everything that is done there. Commissioner Hayden, I was a little thrown off by your tone, as well as some of the words that you used. And they did sound accusatory. Whether you meant it to be that way or not, that is exactly the way they came across. And then I left, I sat back there a little bit confused because I'm listening to you say that things don't add up, and a forensic attorney or a forensic accountant-
I gave it to a friend, yeah.
Okay. Then I come over here and I listen to-
I know. Commissioner, let him, let him finish. He has three minutes, please.
And, and they speak of things coming to a penny. So, you know, there's some confusion there. What I, what I do know is the work that the pantry does is so much needed within this county in a variety of different ways. But I would also think, and I am not part of the administrative angle of this at all, I'm just a volunteer. I pick things up and I put things down, and I do that very well, so I'm happy with that. But my, my point being, I would think any funds that come in, and Carol, maybe you can help me with this, go to social services, go into the social services account, and then-
No, they go into a special account.
Right, I'm sorry. They would go into a foundation account.
No, they go into a special account that's set up in the thirties.
Okay.
That could only be used for flying purposes.
Okay, so it goes there, and then that's subject to accounting at the end of the year, right? Everything's looked at and gone all the way through. So, so there are things that are in place. So, so there are things that are in place, and maybe they're not exactly the way you would like them to be, but I think there are things in place, and I think safeguards are there. Putting that aside, going to you, Mr. Carney, and talking about setting up a nonprofit, the concern that I have with that, and I've been involved with a number of nonprofits, I sit on boards with nonprofits, and they really do a great job, but one of the things that comes with that is a layer of bureaucracy. With that layer of bureaucracy, also comes a layer of cost.
One minute.
Okay, I can get this in in one minute, but comes a layer of cost, all right? Accountants have to be brought in to do audits at the end of the year. You have to set up all legal paperwork that has to get done to put that together, you have to create a board that's coming together and to meet, all right? That's my concern. If you're going to go that route, I would hope that the commissioners would think about absorbing those costs, because what this organization is doing right now for the county is to help the county out, not that all nonprofits don't try to do that, but we're in the midst of, you know, difficult times, doing a really good job with a tremendous amount of volunteers who are coming in to put their time. So just keep that in mind, if it's easier to go that route, that's great, but maybe you could absorb the cost, the costs of a program being set up like that. And I, again, I appreciate all of your work.
And I appreciate everything you said, and I don't think we have a problem with that, and that's something that we could work out with, like I said, Carol and Rita, I think we're willing to help out. I don't think there's anybody up here, unless I'm...
We get $50,000, I mean, that could offset those costs, misspoke, but we're willing to do that. This is going to, listen, we're going into holiday season, I understand that.
Totally understand.
I would like to see us keep rolling the way we are, but there's no reason why we wouldn't help.
And Commissioner Hayden, have you been to the food pantry and see how we operate? Have you been down there?
I have not been down.
I would really suggest you come by tomorrow morning, if you can, if you're working, I understand that, too, but find the time to come and see what's going on on a Tuesday or a Thursday, and really take in the scope of what's done, and picking things up and putting things down, it's a bad thing.
No, I know that, I do, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, am I on the clock?
You're on the clock, you just need your name and your township.
Name and municipality.
I'm Ed Sabo, I live in Stillwater, and normally, I'm up here suggesting or complaining. Tonight, happy birthday, merry Christmas, everything. Delaware Water God, great, I congratulate you for going along with it. Earlier, Mr. Kelski had spoken about the Highlands, and you've agreed to support him, and I, as you may recall, last, two minutes ago, I believe, I was here to push for that. I have extra copies in case you respond that you might need as a resolution, supporting the biggest and most important part of that, citizens' rights to property. You invest $100,000 and 50 acres, and now you can't sell it because you're in the Highlands. Huge, important issue, so if you'll take...